Good evening. Did I hear the thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, good. Welcome to the Monday, April 8th Maplewood City Council meeting. Couple of things tonight I just wanted to mention. I wanted to talk a little bit about an issue that we're going to be talking about tonight, about our community and about public discourse, and how that is an important thing, that we can talk about issues, challenging issues. I know that Maplewood has been in the news this week. We've had two different articles in the St. Paul Pioneer Press and one in the Star Tribune. And from my perspective, this is a classic example about democracy and how it works on the grassroots level, that we can have these kinds of discussions and that we can work through these issues. And so I certainly appreciate the fact that we can do this. On a little bit lighter note, I think I just checked in with our Public Works Director. They're still working on our potholes. And if you do have any potholes that you need to be addressed, would you please, you can report them on the city website? Is that correct? We have a Public Works Director, Love.
Mayor and Council, yes, we have a fix-it link that they can go to, but they also can just call our Public Works general number and report it to our staff.
And staff will be happy to come out and take care of those potholes. And on a lighter note, maybe we won't have to worry about the potholes on Thursday and Friday because they're going to be filled in with snow anyway. So with that, it's April. We've had, you know, the March football, or basketball, thank you, the Final Four. And so now we have to have the big snowstorm. So I think we just have to accept that that's what we're doing here. So with that, would we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk Sint, would you please do our roll call for us?
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here.
And Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Knutson are not joining us tonight.
Thank you very much. Our first agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Councilmember Juneman?
A couple of council presentations. First, the Public Safety Award. Second, I know it's in the consent agenda, but we're going to do it anyway. Spring cleanup is coming. You can't hear it too often. And then also through our Parks and Rec Department, the summer camps that are available.
Okay. Councilmember Neblet, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to add a tour that I had of the water treatment facility and the, it was absolutely fascinating, and the Gold Line Tour that I also took last week, and a letter that has been requested that I wanted to chat with the council about. I'll put those under our council presentations, so. Okay, do I have a motion?
We already had one, didn't we?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Didn't we? We made the motion already.
Nope.
Oh, I thought we had, okay.
Let's roll back. Councilmember Juneman, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would.
The agenda.
The agenda. And she seconded, how unusual.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, approval of the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on. It's a little different. We don't have the same rhythm without our two additional council members.
We'll be fine.
I'm sure we will.
Probably better than fine.
Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes for our workshop. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. All those in favor of the March 25th, 2019 City Council Workshop Minutes?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the March 25th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman, March 25th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, a question?
I don't know if it's a typo, but it doesn't say what it needs to say, I don't think. It's right on page one, which is packet page three, where you were saying some things. And I think it sounds wrong when you read it. Mayor Abrams shared a story of a water rescue of an elderly couple. No, we rescued somebody who had water in their basement. There's a difference. I mean, if this isn't for-
Point of correction, you're right. It was-
You know, it's in perpetuity, someone's going to say, wow, what do they do?
It was a water rescue, 16 inches.
I understand, but-
There was no boat involved.
No, I was going to say, no boat or life preservers involved, I don't think.
City Clerk Sint, can we make that correction?
Thank you.
No boat involved. Okay, with that, all those in favor of approval of the City Council Workshop Minutes for March 25th?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now on to our council, our appointments and presentations. Councilmember, I mean, City Manager, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. The council calendar update is a way to let the council know what's happening on some upcoming council agendas and workshops, and also some of our community events that will be coming up. So with that, on April 18th, we will be having the council and senior management staff retreat. This year, that'll be hosting, we'll be hosting that at our new Wakefield Park building. On April 22nd, on the workshop, we will get an update on the rental licensing program. And during that update, you will also hear more about how we're going to be reaching out to renters. In addition to that, we're going to have an update from, we're going to talk about pet licenses and the RFP for Trash and Recycling contract, which is up this year. At the council meeting, we'll have an update from our prosecuting attorney, Mr. Joe Kelly. On May 13th, at the workshop, we'll have an update on the Rush Line BRT, and we'll hear from NFP, who helps us with our employee benefits, and they're going to give you an update, and hopefully a snapshot of where they think we'll land in terms of our benefit increases for next year. On May 28th, please note, that's a date change. It's Tuesday, not our typical Monday because of the Memorial Day holiday. And I can't believe we're talking about that already, but we are. At that workshop, we're going to have a presentation from Ellers and Associates to look at the financial analysis of our Gladstone Redevelopment Plan, and then get an update on the Nature Center Master Plan. With regard to some of the items that we have been working on behalf of City Council, we need to, I wanted to just poll, as it is the three of you this evening, to see if you would like me to invite the Tobacco 21 folks in at some point because we're not sure that the legislature's going to help us on that one. So we've heard that they're probably not going to take any action on that.
Yes.
Yes, since it was over a year ago that I first brought it up, and now we've let some of our less successful neighbors do it first, I think we should get on it.
Can we confirm before we do, though, that the legislature, that it is totally dropped, that they're not going forward with it?
Yeah, but you're, I talked to two different people, and I went, oh yeah, that. So I'm thinking, maybe not.
I'll do some checking.
Okay, would you, that would be good.
The other thing is, we, I talked about the rental licensing, you'll be getting an update on that shortly. Other than that, this is the point in the agenda where if there's issues or concerns that you would like staff to look into and report back, now would be the time to do that. Anything of interest or concern tonight? Okay. If not, I would point out our new and improved community event list.
My, my.
So as you can see, there's several events that are planned. All of these may or may not be of concern to our general public, but just to let you know about some things that are happening. Tomorrow morning at the MCCY, at 7:30 to 9:30 p.m., well, there is going to be a presentation on, actually, we're partnering with the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce on what's called the Maplewood Business Education Series, and tomorrow the topic will be succession planning. So if you're interested in that, I know the mayor's going and I am going to that. Also, for, looking for some Easter activities, on April 14th, at the Bruin Trump Heritage Farm, they'll have an Easter Bunny breakfast. On 4/18, which is the day of our retreat, there's also a Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, which is always fun. We have the fire department and the police officers competing to see who can give the most blood. So we'll see how that goes. And that evening, we'll have Tip a Cop Night at Crooked Pint, and that's always a good event, too. It raises money for-
Mayor, Members of the Council, Special Olympics. Last year, I believe $2,000 was raised.
So that's a, that's a good way to support the police department and some of their, they spend a lot of time on that, on the Special Olympics. And then on 4/20, we'll have the Edgerton Gym Easter Extravaganza, which is an egg hunt. And I do remember last year, we had to hand out goodie bags at the door because it was full of snow. So it looks like history might be repeating itself. And then just to point this out for, use, you, on the council, there is also a couple of senior roadshow presentations, which is where the public safety folks go out and talk to the seniors about different topics. And I know that was something that was of interest to you, so I thought I'd point that out. Many of the things that are in the calendar here in your packet are also in the Maplewood Living and on our webpage, but I thought it'd just be nice for you to have a comprehensive list of what things are going on, and you can see the number of events and how many things we're doing out in the community. So with that, Mayor, I have nothing else.
Thank you very much. I really like the format with the upcoming community events. They're all in one place. We can take a look when we have free time and what can we get engaged in. Tell me, you know, I was curious when I read through these, tip a cop. What I envisioned was tipping someone over, like in tipping towels.
Those are cops, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, can you maybe explain a little bit? Because it, it sounds a little curious.
You're new here.
I've never gone, have you gone to tip a cop?
Yes.
Yes, in the way long ago, they used to do it, too.
Okay.
Mayor, Members of the Council, please do not tip over a public safety official. This event, we partner with the Crooked Pint. We try and work with their staff, so the waitresses will take orders and the officers actually help to serve the food.
Okay.
And in addition to tips for the waitstaff, which obviously we still encourage, people can give if they choose to, money towards Special Olympics. I think it's about three or four hours. We have a number of our staff involved. Obviously, it's a volunteer opportunity for our staff, and we do a couple of different things along the way during the year to support Special Olympics. We are big Special Olympics supporters, whether it's the torch run. We have people heavily invested in the polar plunge. Actually, our commander, Mike Short Reed, is the statewide coordinator for the polar plunge. And the tip a cop is really just another fun way for us to be able to have a positive community interaction while supporting a great cause.
Thank you. Sounds like a fun time. Okay, so moving on, council presentations. Councilmember Juneman.
Excuse me. First of all, I, maybe the chief can address this a little. One of our officers, Mr. Dugah, got an award, and I thought people should know about yet again how successful our public safety people are. So maybe we could ask the chief just a little bit of a summary.
Mayor, Members of the Council, last week Sergeant Mike Dugah from the Maplewood Police Department got the Stars of Life Award from the Minnesota Ambulance Association at their annual convention. And it's probably pretty unusual that a police sergeant would get an award from an ambulance service, but there's been a lot of work that he has done personally. As people in the council know, Maplewood police officers were at one time paramedics, and some still are. That includes Sergeant Dugah. And so Sergeant Dugah has really worked at a couple of things that were noteworthy. One is working with the fire department, again, we're a public safety department, to do community outreach on things like CPR and AED familiarization. We're also supporting the Stop the Bleed Campaign, so we're helping people to realize how they can take some actions to stop major bleeds. Essentially, we're trying to make sure that in those critical minutes before EMS officials arrive, that people have the tools that they need. Notably, he also has helped the police department, which had no medical certification requirement, to get back to the first responder level. So our paramedics through the fire department, working under medical direction from Regions EMS, have been working very hard to make sure that our officers, again, have those skills and tools in their toolbox, so that when they get to a scene and there's some sort of a traumatic event or cardiac arrest, that they have the training that they need to be successful. And as the council knows, I think there's been at least three people this year alone who have come into the council meeting whose life have been saved through a combination of police, fire, and also our citizens who are out there, which really gets back to our core philosophy of making sure that we have a community that is aware and knowledgeable in how to help save lives in those critical minutes. And so Sergeant Dugah was honored for that.
Thank you.
That's cool.
Very cool. Spring cleanup.
Well, yes, it'll probably be referenced later this evening as well, but you know, I can never pass up a chance like this. It's a little later than usual. I think that's, so we were hoping the snow would be gone, for sure. We're having our annual spring cleanup day, it's Saturday, May 11th, at Aldrich Arena. The usual hour is 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And one of the big draws will again be their paper shredding for free. And usually, he has bundles and carts and full of it, but you know, it's good. But it's all, a lot of the other things we've already had before, appliances, electronics, bulky items, tires, carpet, bicycles, a little side note, the man who comes and picks up these bicycles, I think last year he had to make three trips. He had so many bikes. And he and his partner were thrilled at how many bicycles they'd be able to reconstitute out of all this. So this has been very successful, so don't forget. This time, we're also adding reusable clothing. Emphasis on reusable. So like clean and 35 hole, or dirty and 35 holes, probably not something you'd want to bring. As usual, household hazardous waste, the county does that on that same site. And you can go to our website to see the whole list. And of course, there's a charge per vehicle, but it's a lot cheaper than trying to get rid of those things one at a time at the curb. So mark your candles, May 11th, one more time. And lastly, our Parks and Rec people have always been really good at doing some of these things, but we haven't been as good at advertising them as we've become. And this summer, for people who have children, that you want to think of something productive to do with them for camps for a few days, there are two more, two camps, excuse me, two camps this summer, Art and Creativity Camp, which runs July 29th to August 1st, and then Farm to Table Camp, which I think has been very popular in the past, runs from August 5th to August 8th. And you can get on the website and look up the Maplewood Historical Society, and these things will be listed there because they're going to be at the Bruin Trump Farm. So when you're putting kids, kids' schedules, and I think people are already doing it, you might want to plug in one of those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a couple of items. The first one was my tour of the water treatment facility. I've driven by the water facility over there, the St. Paul Regional Water Facility, probably thousands of times. I've never been in until last week, and it was really pretty amazing. I learned some things that I thought were very cool, that the water for the city of Maplewood come, about 85% of our water comes from the Mississippi River. And the other water comes from some wells, but basically, the majority of our water comes right from the Mississippi River. And the very cool thing is, when the regional water facility was established over 100 years ago, they used gravity, so that the water comes from Fridley, and it comes through pipes, and there are no pumps. They don't have to have any pumps, because it comes through gravity, because that's actually higher land, and so they use gravity to get it down to our Rice Street facility. And since I am going to be the representative on the water board, that, the water commission, I got to have a tour, and it was pretty amazing. There are going to be open tours. The week of May 9th is going to be the, it's, I think, Drinking Water Week, where there'll be a number of different kinds of things that are happening over there at St. Paul Water. And May 9th, they are going to have open tours for the public. It's, they don't have those frequently. It was explained that post 9/11, they basically shut down tours, public tours of the facility, and so they're very infrequent, and May 9th is one day when people will be able to go through a public tour. It's absolutely fascinating to see how they treat our water and what good water quality we have, and really, the foresight of the people that, of the individuals who were behind that over 100 years ago, and how they developed that for our community. So that was really cool. I also got a chance to tour the Gold Line, which is the bus rapid transit tour that, or bus rapid transit system that is going to run from St. Paul, downtown St. Paul, out to Woodbury. And the stops in Maplewood are over by the 3M campus. Now, I actually attended a Gold Line meeting because Councilmember Smith was out of the state, and he asked me if I would go, and on that particular day, they were having a tour. So we all jumped on a bus, and we toured where, approximately where it's going to go. And so we got to see what the future of that Gold Line looks like. And it really was rather amazing, because you could see all of the neighborhoods and all the businesses that are going to be impacted by that in a positive way, because it's going to bring transportation to a number of communities, including our own. And it was quite a fun tour. Also, coming out of that, the Gold Line meeting, there was a request by the city of St. Paul to get letters of support from the individual cities that are impacted, and also Ramsey County and Washington County as well, because this is really a collaborative effort between the different cities that are located on the Gold Line and then the counties as well. And there is a big hurdle for the Gold Line, and that is the Third Street Kellogg Bridge. I don't know if many of you have gone over it in a while, but it is in need, yes, it's a very bad bridge. They have done some retrofitting on it to ensure safety for pedestrians and for bicycle riders, but the bridge really needs to be, we need a new bridge at that level, at that point. And that is crucial to the Gold Line, because the Gold Line is going to run up Kellogg Boulevard, and it needs, St. Paul needs a new bridge. And what they're doing is they're going to the legislature and asking that the cost of the bridge be included in the omnibus bonding bill. And so they have asked that I sign a letter of support, and I thought I would bring it to the council and see if we had consensus on my signing this. I can certainly show you the letter. It was drafted by members of the St. Paul city staff, and this is being requested of St. Paul, Maplewood, Landfall, Oakdale, and Woodbury, in addition to Ramsey County and Washington County. And all, the consensus at the Gold Line meeting was that all of the cities were in support of this, because this is a crucial infrastructure improvement that is going to be approximately $40 million, and they need state aid in order to make that happen.
So they're just asking for what I call emotional support at this point? There's no money, dollar signs on that letter or anything?
Very good question. There are no dollar signs. It is only support in the concept, that this is an important bridge, and it serves as the infrastructure for the Gold Line.
So do they have a plan B when the legislature goes, I can't hear you?
You know, I can't say what the legislature would do, but I think that, I think it's important for the city of Maplewood to support this.
Oh, I do, too. I just wondered if they had gone a step.
No, there's no money. No money coming from us. Thank you very much. So any thoughts on this? Are you in support of this?
Yes.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus. That was the last item that I had. I will go ahead and sign the letter, and this will go out to, it's being sent to Chair Murphy and members of the Capital Investment Committee. So I'll make sure that staff sends that out. And with that, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion concerning the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Consent agenda is moved, items one through seven, seconded, moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, you have a discussion point? Oh, your button, I'm sorry, your button is still not working.
Well, I'm in somebody else's button now tonight, so it's hard to tell.
It's still not working.
I would just like to have number three, since I already brought up number four, which is the spring cleanup.
Okay.
Could somebody just highlight number three for us? Because it's also an important item for the community as a whole and for us as people who have to get a permit for stormwater, this is one way we can do it.
City Manager Coleman, would you speak to the Water Fest sponsorship, please?
Thank you. First of all, I think one of the things that is, we're asking from the council this evening is a donation to the water, to sponsor the Water Fest, and $1,000. And when you think of the partnership and the rewards that we have gotten from the watershed, this seems like a really small drop in the bucket to help them with this event. This is a really great event. It's Saturday, June 1st, from 11:00 to 4:00. It's at Lake Phalen in St. Paul. And it really is just an important event, which allows us to teach our community about the importance of clean water and wildlife habitat and unique ecological features in our watershed. So it's a fun day. They have fishing lessons and contests. It's just, they have sailboat rides and all kinds of things going on.
They have canoeing lessons.
Yeah, so it's really a great community, resident event, family event.
Okay. One point that I wanted to make about this as well, since you were talking about it, in terms of the partnership that we have had with the watershed district, for those people watching, over the last couple of years, the watershed district has partnered with the city and contributed, Mr. Love, is it over $2 million now, towards the renovation of Wakefield Lake? And this seems to be a very small contribution back to the watershed in light of the partnership and the great rewards that our community is getting. And I think anytime we can highlight water and how important it is, this is a good idea.
And if I might, Mayor, one of the reasons they come back to us is because they know that we mean what we say, and they know that if we're saying we're going to work with them, we will. And so they feel very successful as well, that we're doing these things, and they're actually helping us with things that people can see.
We have certainly benefited from their work. So with that, we had a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through seven, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no public hearings, no unfinished business, and we are moving on to new business, to the Ferndale Ivy Project. And Mr. Love, that is yours. Do you want to talk about that with us, please?
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, so for this item, it's the Ferndale Ivy Project. You might recall, this is just west of Century and includes Ivy in the neighborhood to the south. This is a formal step in, in the improvement process. Tonight, you're, we do have our plans and specifications here with us that are, have been completed for the project, and what we're asking council for is authorization to put them out for bid, and then also to order the preparation of the assessment role. So this is a formal, formal step in, in the process, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions concerning, this is now, you know, second or third time that we have talked about the Ferndale Ivy area's street improvement. Any other, any questions? Councilmember Juneman.
Actually, it's only a comment for the public to remind them that these, it's 1.2 miles of streets, and the average condition is 46 out of 100. I suppose they could wait till it was 32 out of 100, but I think they qualify at this point. And I know that there are, down in, over in this area, there's a fair number of older infrastructure pieces, to be cut, water and sewer and all that. It's very much like the neighborhood where I live, and so it is a good time for that to happen. The neighborhood is always better off.
Okay.
Do we have to do two motions, or can we just do one?
Two. I believe we have to do two.
We have two, but I'm asking them. Yes, two?
Two. Do I have a motion?
I move approval, the resolution approving the plans and specifications and advertising for bids on the Ferndale Ivy Street improvements.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, resolution approving plans and specifications and advertising for bids. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I further move the resolution ordering preparation of the assessment role for this project.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, resolution ordering the preparation of the assessment role. assessment role. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next road project, we've got Maeland Crestview Forest Area Pavement Rehabilitation. Once again, Mr. Love?
Yes, Mayor and council. So again, I do have the, the plans with me here. It's the same motions that you guys were considering for the last project. This project is our pavement rehabilitation project. So again, it's, it typically is a reclaim project where we're grinding up the road and putting a new base. So it's less intensive than a full street reconstruction project. Couple little points about it. It's 2.1 miles, and has a pavement condition rating of 36 out of 100.
That's pretty bad.
So another area that's bad, this is another project that we were bringing to the south leg of Maplewood, dealing with a lot of that pavement stripping issues. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Juneman, do you have a question?
No, I don't. I just wanted to point out again that this is down the south area where they have that rotten asphalt that we got stuck with. So they should be happy. And this is one of those projects, it's good to point out, I think that without it, we probably wouldn't, without the franchise fees, we would not be doing this project right now. So this is another success for having chosen to do things that way.
Councilmember Neblet?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just have a quick question. I was wondering about contract compliance requirements. Are there contractual requirements in these projects over a certain amount?
Yes. So, Mayor and council, anytime we have a project over, I believe, $100,000, we're required to go out for public bid. And that, that's what we did with, or what we will do with this. And then we take the lowest responsible bidder on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I move the resolution approving plans and specifications and advertising for bids for the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet. Resolution approving plans and specifications and advertising for bids for Maeland Crestview Forest Area Pavement Rehabilitation. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next motion? Do I have a, I'll move a resolution ordering the preparation of the assessment role. Do I have a second?
Oh, so moved.
Of the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project.
Here, I was trying not to jump the gun and be nice, and it doesn't pay off, does it?
No, it doesn't.
So moved.
No, seconded.
Oh, second.
Second. Moved by Abrams, seconded by Neblet. Resolution ordering the preparation of the assessment role for the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Pavement Rehabilitation. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. And now we are at our last item on our agenda. We're going to talk, talk about the Myth Public Safety Review. What I thought I would do is kind of explain how we're going to conduct this. I, the first person that's going to talk is going to be Chief Nadeau, our Public Safety Director. And he's going to present the staff report. Counsel, if we have questions, I think we can, we'll ask Chief Nadeau any questions that we have of him. And then I'm going to ask our city attorney, Ron Beatty, if he would weigh in on kind of the legal perspective on the issues raised with the Myth Public Safety Review. And then, counsel, we will ask Mr. Beatty any questions that he has. And I see that there are representatives from the Myth here, and we will give you an opportunity to make a presentation to the council, and then we will ask whatever questions we have of you. And at that point, then, the council is going to discuss the issue that has been raised. I'll, I'll start off the discussion also by saying that I was the one that requested that this be put on the agenda. And I did so because I recall that back in December of 2018, there was a new owner of the Myth, and a change in the liquor license request, or approval, that it was transferred to the new owner. And so within the first three months of having the, the new owner onboard, we had a serious incident that really gave rise to this public discourse that we're having tonight, where there were several drug overdoses that occurred at the Myth on March 29th, and there was also a police shooting. And I thought that it was a good time, in light of the fact that we have summer coming. And I know from past experience that the Myth is certainly more active in terms of the venue, and the different kinds of musical things that are going on at the Myth during the summer. And I thought it was a good time for us to do a public safety review. I think that the timing just seemed ripe for us to do that. So with that, Chief Nadeau, would you please give us the staff report?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Over the last 24 months, there's been a number of issues affecting crime and safety at the Myth, which is located at 3090 South Line, or South Lawn Drive in Maplewood. And despite meeting with them, corresponding via letters, providing a detailed written analysis of issues, and assigning them a department liaison, unfortunately, these problems persist. In looking at it, over the last few years, there have been 262 calls for service, consisting of at least 122 reported crimes. I would point out, that doesn't mean that that's all the crimes. That's just the crimes that have been reported to the police department. I'd like to highlight some of the occasions which have been particularly troubling from a public safety standpoint, and which have resulted in large police responses. On October 22nd of 2017, there was six case numbers pulled, and there was a large multi-agency response due to a multitude of incidents occurring at the same time. Five persons were arrested for offenses, including assault, criminal sexual conduct, and criminal damage to property. A brawl occurred inside the venue, resulting in two security officers being assaulted. Other calls were for a theft and a fight. On December 13th of 2017, 11 case numbers were pulled, and the entire shift of officers, as well as community service officers, were required to respond. Calls included two criminal sexual assault or rape reports, an attempted burglary of a nearby residence by an intoxicated patron who left the Myth, and apparently thought it was their own residence, multiple drunken disorderly people, and a large fight. A letter was sent to the Myth in response. On December 2nd of 2017, five case numbers were pulled with a large multi-agency response. By multi-agency, I mean four, five, or six law enforcement agencies having to respond. A large riot occurred on that night, causing Myth security staff to have to barricade themselves inside the building to keep an uncontrollable crowd outside. Other calls were for a fight, multiple drunk persons, and a civil problem. A letter was sent to the Myth in response. On January 8, excuse me, January 31st of 2018, the Myth security manager directly contacted a police sergeant requesting police response for a combative male that was pinned down by staff. The male appeared to be on drugs and assaulted a police officer during his arrest. A letter was sent to the Myth in response. On March 29th of 2019, seven case numbers were pulled, and a large multi-agency response was again required. Calls included two reports of theft, disorderly conduct, two drug and alcohol overdoses, two reports of break-ins to auto, and shots fired resulting in one person being shot in the neck. Luckily, not killed. A second repeat nuisance call for service letter was sent to the Myth property owner, identified from tax record, for the seven calls stemming from this event. The first nuisance call for service letter was sent in January 2019, after a number of calls for service to the venue that night. Over the last 24 months, there has been more than 20 arrests that have been made of persons associated with events at the Myth. These arrests were for crimes involving fighting, disorderly conduct, assault, criminal sexual conduct, or rape, and drunk driving. Additionally, there have been two reports of robbery, and a dozen reports of assault with no identified suspects. Notably, and very concerning, police personnel assisted by paramedics have responded to more than 30 medical calls during this timeframe for overdoses. These involve people with either excessive alcohol intoxication or drugs. In addition to these calls for service above, our police officers have logged more than 75 proactive police visits. Proactive police visits are essentially our officers going there on the city's time, typically in, in pairs or larger groups, to just have a presence at the event and try to prevent or curb crime and disorder. Every time we do that, and all of the hours that have been devoted to this, take time away from their other duties in patrolling the city of Maplewood. The plethora of incidents at Myth have taxed Maplewood Public Safety and other regional law enforcement assets, and resulted in repeated victimization of guests attending events, as well as others in the vicinity. The Public Safety Department has serious concerns about the continuing activity at the Myth, and asks council for direction on how to proceed. I would say that we have met with staff and owners of the Myth in the past, and quite frankly, I think that those meetings have been cooperative. We've talked about some of those issues. We've tried to work with them in a way that brings, you know, their, them knowledge of what types of events are seeming to spur this kind of activity. We see them as an important community partner and business in our city, but we continue to be concerned about the crime and the violence that occurs at the Myth, as well as the overdoses.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I, I don't, I want to start, I have a couple of questions for you. You know, this has gotten a lot of notoriety. Like I said at the beginning, we've been in the paper twice now on the front page. And that's really not how I think our city wants to be known, is for having these types of problems. And I know that, that there were some questions raised, I know I was asked by reporters this week, about why don't Maplewood police officers simply work part-time at the Myth? And I think that was suggested actually by Myth staff, at least, you know, that was what was reported in the newspaper, that they suggested that the problem could be resolved if Maplewood police officers worked part-time at the Myth. Chief, what is your position on that?
Mayor, members of the council, first of all, I don't think that the mere presence of police officers did result criminal activity. But essentially, I think there's a lot of issues with having police officers work off-duty at an establishment that serves liquor, and where there's crime and disorder. First and foremost, I think you've got liability for the city. I know that other cities in Minnesota have paid millions of dollars in claims due to officers working off-duty, whether it's issues of excessive force, issues of false arrest, there can be any variety of issues that bring liability to the city. The other thing I saw in that same article, Mayor, was that, you know, the true cost could be absorbed by a business. I don't think that that's true. I mean, we've got officers that have uniforms, that have training, it costs thousands of dollars to recruit officers. You've got equipment that they utilize. You've got benefits with retirement and other things. And so I don't think that that statement was accurate. Another thing that we get concerned about is officer injuries. We currently have three officers that, for a variety of reasons, are out. And I can tell you, it gives us a lot of issues with scheduling difficulties. We've got issues related to workman's compensation. There's a good amount of overtime to cover shifts. There's questions about whether an officer working late at night is prepared to work the next day again for the citizens of our community. If they're tired, if they're overworked, officer wellness is one of the things that's stressed in 21st century policing. And then I think the, the final, and perhaps the most appropriate question is, is it appropriate for our community's police officers to be put in these types of situations where they're essentially working as security, or bouncers, or door people? And there is a, an expert in law enforcement liability by the name of Gordon Graham, and he likes to use a phrase that if it's predictable, it's preventable. I would like to say that it's predictable, that if we have officers in situations where we know that there's going to be drinking, we suspect that there's going to be drug use, where our officers could be involved in physical confrontations, that we think that liability could result from that. We think that investigations could result from that. We think that the public, you know, may question why we're doing that type of activity. Obviously, we're going into a club where there's a lot of people. And so I just think, overall, it's bad public policy. And certainly, this is not something that has been applied to only the Myth. There's a lot of places in our city that serve alcohol. There's a lot of places in our city that have live music. It has been more universally applied.
Okay, thank you. You know, I really appreciated the materials that you put together for us. It was very helpful to see the communication that has been sent to the Myth. I know that we've done more than just send letters to them. Do you want to speak a little bit about our nuisance police call ordinance and the application in terms of the Myth, please?
Mayor, members of the council, so we, we, you as a council enacted an ordinance last year, that we have a nuisance calls for service ordinance. And really, what we're trying to do is make sure that there isn't any particular property or business in our city, it could even be a residence, that continues to draw public safety resources. In this particular case, the Myth is utilizing a lot of law enforcement resources, but they're also utilizing a lot of our paramedic and firefighter services as they continue to respond to medical emergencies, overdoses, and such. And so that particular ordinance requires that if there's some sort of a violation, that we send a letter to the business, letting them know, the first letter, that there was a violation, and telling them what that violation was, encouraging them to call if they have questions. The second letter then, again, goes, they're not charged or assessed a fee at that point. So they've now received two of these letters. If there's a third and subsequent offense within a 12-month period, they can face a fine of $250, and they can be assessed the cost of law enforcement or public safety resources that are needed to continue to respond and remediate those types of issues.
In the circumstance that we just had with the double drug overdoses, and with the police shooting, and the fact that, I, I think it was five different agencies, four or five different agencies, in terms of our nuisance police call ordinance, if this was a circumstance where there had been, where they were at three or more, would the Myth then be responsible for the, for compensating the other agencies as well for their services that were called?
I think I'd have to defer to Mr. Beatty on that, but I don't think that the ordinance is restrictive of just many, of just Maplewood resources. So if they took five police agencies, I believe there was five or six at the last event, I would imagine that the council could look at how much the entire response cost, and not just how much it cost Maplewood.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions for right now. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for our chief? Any comments? Okay. Then, Mr. Beatty, you're up to talk about the legal perspective on this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, council. You know, the city's real authority in this context comes with regard to the liquor license. Because this, you know, this kind of business really needs the liquor license. And the city has broad discretion with regard to that. The statute allows the city to impose what is called a sanction, or a number of sanctions. One is, the city can levy a fine of up to $2,000 per violation. The city can suspend a license for 60 days, or the city can revoke a license. Now, those last two are obviously pretty serious consequences. And the statute does require that the applicant or the license holder be given an opportunity for a hearing, if the council wishes to do either of those, with reasonable notice, and that's generally considered to be at least a 10-day notice. You know, most of the violations that come up, that invoke this portion of the statute, involve serving minors, or after-hours, or so forth. But there is some broader language in the statute, which deals with, I think, more significant events. And I think what we may be talking about here, one of the provisions explicitly mentioned in the statute that would allow the city to take one of those actions, is failure to comply with an applicable statute, rule, or ordinance relating to alcoholic beverages, or the operation of the licensed establishment, or fail, failure to comply with a lawful license condition duly imposed by the authority, or agreed to by the license holder. It's that last section that I think we have a little bit of experience with. As some of you know, we, a couple of years ago, had a, another facility in town that had, also had a history of violence and a number of other things. And what the city eventually did, the council eventually did, was adopt what was labeled an Operation Action Plan. It is two-plus pages of very specific requirements as to what the facility owner was going to do, or not. do or not do to address security and other problems. And it was formally adopted by the council, so everyone knew what the requirements were going to be, and when there was a subsequent event, about six months later, another shooting, which, which turned out to be the last event in that, that context, it was that action plan that was used as a, as a, as something against which the license was going to be considered. And the staff's recommendation at that time was a revocation of the, of the license specifically because the operator had failed to comply with that plan adopted by the council and imposed on them lawfully. In the end, that didn't happen because the license holder voluntarily gave up their license, but that was going to be what the city was going to use. And so, I suggest that that's a pretty good model or template for what might be appropriate in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Beatty? Councilmember Juneman.
In reference to that particular incident, the perpetuated, the final issue, did we not, it was, and it was Paul Schnell, who was our public safety director at the time, I believe he was the one who drafted the strategic business plan that they then accepted. And at the time, I thought, man, that is a really, a really positive thing to do. And I still think that's true, but as the only one who was sitting up here a long ago when this whole thing started, there were a lot of people in the neighborhood, particularly to the east, that went, why would we want a nightclub? That's a very good question. And my response was, well, it doesn't matter whether we want it or not, all they need is a liquor license. And I sort of had some positive feeling and a thought, because for a while, that was lived up to fairly well. But this is really the third one of these for me, and this involves a whole lot more people than the other ones did. But I will tell you from my point of view, the very first one was a small establishment on Rice Street, who just couldn't get their act together, and they had fights and shootings and you name it, they had it. And they'd throw all the glasses in the joint at the walls, and it was a lot of fun. And they agreed to try something as well, and it didn't happen. If you go over there and look now, it's a chiropractic office. That was a large step up, in my opinion. And then we got to the one on Rice and Lavender, which had, understandably, had the neighborhood kind of up in arms, and that was a lot of shots, I will give you, 70 shots were fired just that one night in the parking lot. But we heard from people in Roseville, because they're right across the street, in, whoops, sorry, in, in Maplewood, particularly from the people who live east of the mall, and here, this one applies. Neighborhoods exist, and those people aren't silly or stupid, they know they back up to some commercial property. But being neighbors to a commercial, commercial property doesn't mean you expect gunshots. Or when anything big is coming there, people actually say to me, why does this have to happen? It's like, no, I don't know, talk to me, talk to people who run it. But right over that way now, west of your establishment, there are over 700 housing units. It was a little over 500 a few years ago, now it's over 700. Some of them very high-end rentals. People do not expect to live up there to be hearing this. Let's go another step, listening to the chief's synopsis. I guess I'm a little puzzled, and I know you are newer than the last incident, but it appears that the police department, or the Director of Public Safety anyway, bends over backwards to try and help alleviate some of this, try and get you to do what you need to do, whatever you want to identify it. And it's sort of settled by a little more than a handshake, because they sent letters and it was assumed by talking to you that you would live up to it. Well, that hasn't happened. And the other people up here can say what they want, but I've sat through enough of this now, and I was the person, one of the people that had to vote on the original licenses, I said. And then when we redid the license in 2017, because it seemed to be that, that manager at that point was living up to the demands, if you will, but I can tell you tonight, actually it was last week when I heard about this, I never would have voted yes for that, transfer of that liquor license. Unless we can find a way, and I would like to see the chief put in charge of what they need to do, because he knows better than we do, unless we can find a way that's reasonable, but the power's in his hands and the people that work with him, to make you do what you say you're going to do, rather than hope that you might on a handshake, I'm not interested at all anymore in supporting you. I'm sorry, I'm not.
Could we maybe reserve the other questions?
No, just wait now. So I want to ask, I want to ask him.
Any other questions for Mr. Beatty? I'll, we'll get to that. Any other questions for Mr. Beatty?
Okay, do we, can we put our stock in the chief to help us remedy this? In other words, if we say we'd like to see a plan and X number of time to, to do it, is that our jurisdiction, or?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, I think that's exactly what the statute envisions in that last section that I read, a, a condition imposed by the authority or voluntary, or agree to, voluntarily agree to by the permit holder. You know, in the previous case that I was talking about, that happened slightly before I got here, and so frankly, I don't know how much of it was voluntary and how much of it was imposed, but a product emerged, however that happened, and it was formally adopted by the council, and that's the law that was imposed on those folks-
Okay.
-and would have been used to, to judge their future actions, and I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Neblet.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Beatty, I just have one quick question about the ordinance. You said that there's a portion in the ordinance that talks about $2,000 per violation?
Yes, it's a statute, yes.
In the statute. So in light of this last incident, if that $2,000 per violation was implemented, how many violations occurred last week?
Madam Mayor, council, that's a good question. I don't know the answer of that, to that. I would defer to the, the police chief. I would point out that the statute says that the three options that I talked about, the $2,000 per incident, the suspension or revocation can be used individually or in conjunction with one another. Now, some of them are mutually exclusive, if you're going to revoke the license, obviously suspending-
Sure.
-doesn't make any sense, but to your point, I think certainly if, if a, even with, with one of those other two, you can impose a violation, the penalty, and I think it would be up to the chief to determine how many incidents there were.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Beatty, and then we're going to move on to hearing from the Myth. Then the chief can answer that later. We'll get back to that. Is there a representative from the Myth who would like to speak to the council tonight?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams.
Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Abrams, council members. My name is Andrew Bardwell, I'm an attorney with Skolnick and Joyce in Minneapolis. I'm here on behalf of Myth Live Two Incorporated, that is the new licensee at the Myth that, Mayor, you mentioned earlier this evening. I'm accompanied by Brian Jessen, who is the general manager of the Myth. I'm also accompanied by Kirby Sanchez, who is the Director of Security, and back in the gallery is former Hennepin County Sheriff Rich Stanek. I want to thank the council and the mayor for the opportunity to address the council this evening. The Myth's goal is to be an asset to the community, and we believe that it is. It's a unique concert venue, it's more than a regional attraction, it brings in national performing acts and draws people from beyond this region. It contributes to the community as a whole. All the other restaurants in the area are full when Myth has a show, the hotels are full as well. I think if you were to reach out to the other local businesses, they would be supportive of the Myth, of the business it brings to them. Now, in, in terms of being an asset and being a partner with the city, it is accurate that back in December, the Myth did meet with the new chief and did discuss some things that could be improved, and they actually took steps to implement that. There were quote-unquote "club nights" that were held at the venue. The entity has stopped doing those. Apparently, those created a little more commotion than some other events, so they've been stopped. The all-ages shows used to go much later, they're stopped now closer to 11:00 PM rather than 1:00 AM, which they would be able to be open to, because staying open longer creates more opportunity for issues to arise. It's another step they've taken. Now, in working with the liaison from the police department, Mr. Sanchez has been able to provide information proactively in terms of what acts are booked, how many tickets have been sold, what the staffing levels for the show are going to be, so they give all that information to the police department beforehand. And on that same token, after the events, there's generally a recap sent, so this is what worked well, this is where we had issues, all of that information is provided voluntarily and proactively to the police department. It should be obvious that the safety of the guests at Myth is paramount. That is why the company has retained former Hennepin County Sheriff Rich Stanek to perform a security audit, review the procedures and practices that are in place, make suggestions where suggestions are needed. I think probably everybody here knows Sheriff Stanek's qualifications, he's the right man for the job. And again, in, in terms of what can be done, what should be done, Myth absolutely would like to partner with the Maplewood Police Department and have off-duty police officers present. That would be at the Myth's cost, not the community's cost, and this is not a, a unique concept, it's not a novel concept, it happens in other municipalities, at other facilities. And, you know, if the city of Maplewood isn't willing or able to participate in that, Myth would certainly reach out to other municipalities or other agencies to see if that partnership is available elsewhere. I think it is also necessary to point out that the neighborhood in which Myth is located has changed since the Myth initially opened back in 2005. There has been more residential development, the overall policing of that neighborhood has become more complicated, and I don't think it is appropriate to single out Myth as the cause of that. There is more than just Myth operating in that neighborhood that needs to be looked at, and again, that goes with the partnership, that's why Myth wants to have an open dialogue with the city and address these issues. Now, again, as Myth is interested in being an asset to the community and benefiting the other local businesses, Myth is in talks with another developer to develop a, a new modern multimillion-dollar hotel project on the Myth site. That again, would benefit the local community, it would increase tax base, it's better for everybody involved. That type of development is dependent on the venue of the Myth as an anchor, that's the attraction. As I said before, I do have the club's general manager and the club's head of security with me. If any of the council members have questions for me or them, it might be appropriate for me to hand off to them, because obviously, they're there day-to-day.
And I'd like to, I'm Brian Jessen, general manager, I'd like to add just a couple points of clarity. One being, excuse me, one second, with, with the, we're no longer a nightclub, a nightclub is not something that we do, we are purely a concert venue. We used to be open every single weekend, without entertainment, just as a large bar, and that is no longer the case. When we are requesting off-duty police officers, I think I've probably done a poor job explaining what it is that we're looking for there. We are not looking for people to take tickets, for bouncers, for the police to be anything other than a presence and a deterrent with their presence at the Myth. I worked in hotels in downtown Minneapolis for a long time, and we would hire off-duty officers for team arrivals and celebrity arrivals, and the arrangement that we had with them was very similar to what we'd be hoping for, which would be for them to physically be there, but if there was any sort of incident where they felt like action was needed, our staff would take the first step in an effort to handle any situations that arise, but just by physically being there as a presence and as a backup if that happened, we do believe that we would be able to really minimize a lot of the things that do happen. I also do want to point out the, the articles that you mentioned. We are disappointed in kind of the, the way that everything was worded as far as this being issue of the Myth versus the city of Maplewood. We feel that we are all on the same team here, and we all want the same thing, as we mentioned. We want the Myth to be an asset into the community of Maplewood. We bring over 200,000 people into the city every year, and as Andrew mentioned, the restaurants and the local businesses do benefit greatly from that. As you mentioned as well, with the elimination of the club nights and us closing earlier, we have shown a responsiveness to requests to change our behavior in order to be a better fit with the community. Our hiring of Mr. Stanek is another step towards that. We do think that we can do better, and we absolutely want to do better, and we want to work with the city to do better. I think the letters that are being sent, just by going off of a sheer number of letters that are being sent, is not an accurate representation of, you know, that means that crimes are happening inside the Myth. One example of that is a show we had this past February, it was very cold outside, our coat check was open, but the young demographic of people that attended the show chose to pile their coats all over the floor. This created, in our opinion, a very significant fire hazard and tripping hazard as they were just strewn about the venue, so I instructed our staff to collect those coats, which we did. We ended up donating more than 200 coats and blankets to South St. Paul Women's Shelter, but that also generated several phone calls from angry parents who are wondering where my children's coats and blankets are. I had one parent that I talked to say that their child told them that the, the security confiscated their coats from, and sweatshirts from their child, and they had reported it to the police department. And, you know, I, while there are serious things that, you know, we think we can improve upon, there are also calls that are, in our opinion, not valid. So to go, you know, to base your opinions purely based on the number of calls, I don't think is a accurate representation of what we have going on. My final point, to respond to the first three large call situations that happened at the end of 2017, our response to that was completely redoing our security department with the start, or first step of installing Mr. Sanchez as our new Director of Security. He rehired some employees, hired the majority brand-new, they all went through new training. We do feel like that was a very positive measure. We do conduct ongoing training, and with Mr. Stanek's help, we will continue to do our best to be a better member of the community. Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, did you want to say something too, or?
I, I'm not feeling too well. I'm sorry, I do apologize. I'm, I'm kind of here in spirit, though. Thank you.
Any members of the council have any additional questions for us?
I see that we do have some questions, and I think I'm going to start off. I would agree with you that the Myth is an important entertainment venue in our community, and I certainly appreciate that you want to do better. From my perspective, by bringing this to my fellow council members, my position is we're going to require you to do better, because the conduct that occurred on March 29th is not acceptable, it's not okay for our community, so I'll kind of lead into the discussion with that. But I'd like to hear from our other council members, and I didn't hear, see who pushed their button first. Councilmember Juneman.
I have a question about security. How many security officers do you normally have? And you'll have to tell me, obviously, it changes with sight of crowd, so tell me your minimum and maximum and where they are in the building, please.
Kirby, do you want to address this?
I can do it, yeah. We roughly have it in between 15 to 40. It all depends on the night and what's required for every tour that comes into town.
Okay.
So, for example, that- So, for example, that, the last incident, we had 34 members working that night on that incident, on the March 29th.
Were they all inside the building, or were some of them outside?
We have some that are outside.
How many is some?
We have four that were outside at that time.
In your lot, or in any lot in which you know there are cars parked for your benefit? Because I know you have parking agreements.
Yeah. Nope. At that time, we had them all in our lot, because that's when the main, when people are leaving the building, we were already closed. So I was arguing, we work from our lot and outwards.
Well, I think maybe that's not working, since the shooting actually took place across the street. I mean, I'm just playing off of this, and I'm kind of saying where she is. Much as I'd like to say, well, that's good, we have a nightclub, be rah, or no, it's just a club, I don't want to have to hear from him what I've been hearing. So if one of your issues in controlling it is number or training of security, then you would have to do that before I'd be interested in hearing it. And I know I'm old, but in your genre, so are they. If you take a large building of any kind and pack people in it like this, and they're drinking, you aren't going to have a quiet night. I might be old, I'm an adult. I just don't see then that you have enough security. If 40 is your max, you had 1,800 people that night, I think it said in here. So what about when you go up to more people than that? I mean, if this can go on when you have 34 security, what's going to go on when you have a bigger crowd?
It all, like I said, it all varies from what events.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Ticket sales and everything back.
That's why I'm asking. How many would you have on a big night? First of all, what's a big night for occupancy?
Ticket sales are 3,000. That's our, consider our sold-out.
So if you had 34 that night, and there were 18...
And once again, it all varies on what's performing and what's all needed for tour.
What I think is, I think you're using a formula that might sound good to you on paper, but now we have the reality check going on. And I would think that one of the things we might require of you is more security, better trained, and spread them around a little. If you're going to be using someone else's parking lot, and you know closing-up time is really intense, then you need to be in more than that place. Because those other parking lots are also in our community. And I know, was it you said something about, I will sort of semi-correct you. When you opened, there were 550 housing units directly west of you. We have now added 300 more. But there were 550 there when you opened. So it's been a residential community since before you were there, actually. And so that's a, for you, that has to be a consideration. It just has to be. But I, it sounds to me like maybe security's an issue. I think, based on what you intimated before and what the chief has told us, I do think that, I mean, it's all very nice that you sent him a list of who's coming and how many people that might be. But it still seems to me, after the 29th of March, that you are still choosing business choices over community safety. And we've got to find a way to solve that. And as long as I've got the floor for me, I'm with him. Hire somebody else. Call the sheriff's department, see if they want to send any brown uniforms. And there's more than one reason. First of all, we are not the hugest police department on the planet. And in this last incident, you took most of what was up there on your one targeted space. It's not right. Not in our community, it's not right.
Would the council have any issue if we did reach out to the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department?
You know, before we start talking about that, I think this is really an opportunity for us to ask questions and get some responses. I can tell you that one of the recommendations, the recommendation that I'm going to make is that we require The Myth to engage in an operational action plan with our police department. And I think that the specifics about security is not something that myself, as the mayor, can really tell you what to do. I think that that's something that, you know, we have the expert sitting right over there, who is the public safety director for our community. And just a little aside to that as well, I also support our public safety director and, in terms of not permitting Maplewood police officers to serve, work part-time for The Myth, I do not, I think that that would be disastrous for our community. And I support our public safety director in that regard. So I think what we'll do is talk more about specifics, once we want to hear from councilmember Neblet as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr., is it Mr. Jepson?
Jessen, yes.
Justin. So you said that your, the calls that have been made have kind of been unfairly characterized as being more serious. I might be misquoting you there.
I don't want to say that every call is without legitimacy. That would be inappropriate. But I also, I just want to point out that not every call that is made absolutely means that something serious was happening.
Okay. I don't know what you have in your possession, but what we have in our possession are the number of calls that have been made and the description of what those calls are. There isn't anything in there about coats. Okay? They're more serious than that. And my concern also is about security. I just, I don't know what kind of security you all have. I don't know what kind of security checks you are conducting. I don't know that, there are things going on inside The Myth, not just the shooting outside The Myth. That was bad enough. But there were serious things happening inside the building. And I don't, I am not a security expert, never have been, don't think I want to be. And I can appreciate that you are a concert venue. Everybody likes to go to a concert. But everybody wants to go to a concert and feel safe. I don't want to go to a concert and have to worry about whether or not I'm going to be sexually assaulted, or if somebody is going to fall over on me who's had an overdose. This is really frightening stuff to me. And like I said, I don't know what kind of security you guys are doing, but something is not working. And I haven't been here very long, but I live in Maplewood, and I have heard about incidents that have happened at The Myth, just as a resident. So I don't know what you're planning to do. I heard you say that you have former Chief Stanek to do a review. I hope he does good for you. But right now, whatever it is that you guys are doing, it really isn't working. So I just, you gotta do better.
Councilmember Neblet, if I might respond.
Yes.
First, with respect to the issue regarding the coats, Attorney Batty mentioned earlier the nuisance ordinance that would, after the third nuisance, result in, I think it was a $250 fine, and then potential costs being applied. The first nuisance notice was respect, with respect to the calls for the coats that Mr. Jessen mentioned. So it's documented in a different form than I believe the council has in front of it currently. So that's the disconnect there. I appreciate your comments with respect to who the experts are and who knows about security. And that is absolutely why we have retained former Sheriff Stanek. If there are areas that can be improved, we're certainly there to improve them. That's our goal, that's why we've been proactive in retaining him. And it is a goal to have a partnership with the city. If there is no ability to have Maplewood police officers present, there may be a possibility to have officers from another organization. And that's certainly something we'll explore. We will take the recommendations from former Sheriff Stanek, and we'll make the improvements that we can improve. That's really why we're here. I do want to address one more thing. In Mayor Abrams' opening remarks, she indicated or noted that there's been a change in the licensee, and the current licensee has only been in place for three months. And so I think it's through that lens, we have to look at the events that may have transpired back in 2017, 2016, as isolated from this new management that's in place. And though we can certainly learn from those past events, I don't know that they are the responsibility of the current licensee, though they will inform our review and our future steps.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can appreciate that, except that the same types of things are still happening. That's the thing. I understand what you're saying about the new licensee, and you've only been there three months. I can appreciate that. But the same types of things are still happening, which is my point.
Understood.
Thank you.
Just so that it's clear, the fact that there is a new owner who has operated the business for only three months is exactly why I wanted to bring this to the council. This really was a transfer of the alcohol license, and the fact that we have a shooting within the first three months of operation is a huge concern for me, because when the council was alerted that we had this serious incident at The Myth, what I envisioned was we're just now going into the summer months. And if we have a new owner who's only been on for three months, and we've got a shooting within the first three months, what is this summer going to look like? And that was my concern. And I thought about the residents that live close by, and Councilmember Juniman is correct, there were 500 residents over there at the time. I remember when The Myth used to be a foot locker or a shoe store. So, you know, you're talking to people that are from this community and know what this community is like. And so those were my two big concerns. If this could happen within the first three months of operating a business, when you think that you are on your toes and doing absolutely everything that you can to make this business a success, and you wind up with an event like this in the first three months, what do we have to look forward to in our city? This particular call was a huge drain on public safety resources, and that isn't acceptable. Our police department is here for everybody in our community. They are not your private security officers. They will respond, they will continue to respond to calls, because that's what their duty is. But they have a duty to this broader community, and I think as elected officials here, we have a duty to have this discourse, to have this discussion with you, and to tell you that we are going to require you to do better. Absolutely. Councilmember Juniman, you had something else you wanted to say?
I just, I think it's almost disintegrating, sorry. Almost disintegrating into word games. I think you should be getting the drift. Nobody says you shouldn't be here. We said you shouldn't operate the way you are now. There's a big distinctive difference. And we, as Ms. Neblet said, we reflect the community, and we also have a community right around you that expects to be protected from what's going on over there right now. So the answer to that in my head, if I could do it, is to make you go away, and the neighbors wouldn't have anything to complain about. But that's not going to happen. So you, I have to live with that. Now, you live with the fact that we're going to give you requirements. And from my standpoint, if you miss one of them, you're done. You're done. So, and the requirements will come from that man over there. You can have Mr. Stanek, fine. But the two of them have to come into agreement. And ultimately, our director of public safety says what goes. It's our city.
What I'd like to suggest is that I'm going to put that into the form of a motion. And that motion would be that the, our public safety director would enter into an operational action plan with The Myth, whatever representative, former Sheriff Stanek, or whoever from The Myth would be the representative, and whoever our public safety director wants to have with him. But that what will be the outcome of that will be an operational action plan. And that operational action plan will be brought back to the council, and that the council would then adopt the operational plan as a requirement for you to operate your business in our city. I will make that, well, I want to add just a couple of other things. I'll come back to a formal motion in a moment. But I want to make sure that we really, that you recognize the importance of this. And what I'm going to ask is that this be done as soon as possible, and that is without delay. Because at our very next council meeting, and we meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, I would like our public safety director to come back to us with an update on where we are. Now, I don't expect that we may not have that operational action plan in place yet, but I want to hear from our public safety director that there has been progress, and I want a certain date as to when that operational action plan will be brought back to the city council. And that we then, as a council, will discuss it again, and we will formally take action on it. So.
Do you want a timeframe as part of that action plan?
Chief, do you want to weigh in on that? I want to report back in two weeks.
Sure, but I mean, when it's enforced.
But when would you like to have the operational action plan in place?
Mayor members of the council, I'm happy to meet with representatives from The Myth, whoever they're consulting with, as early as this week. I would imagine that that process might take a little while. One question I would have for the council is, we've kind of focused on some of the issues of violence, sexual assault, and other things. Would the council also like the overdose issue to be a part of that discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Big time.
I'm happy to report back at the end of next week. I'm sure that we can trade information and set up a meeting as early as the end of this week or the middle of this week, or at the latest next week.
Really, what I'm looking for at the next council meeting is to report back. You know, we'll have our full complement of council members back at that time. And I'd like a report on where are we in terms of reaching agreement on this operational action plan? Because I would like the full council to be able to weigh in on that and to vote on that.
One more question.
One more. Councilmember Juniman.
It's for him, I guess.
Okay.
In that plan, can we also have an update on the parking agreements? So we know exactly where incidents might have a tendency to happen.
I think that's a good point. Can you include that as part of your discussion, Chief?
Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion that our chief engage in discussions with staff representatives from The Myth in regards to creating an operational action plan that will eventually be brought back to the council, and that the chief will then report back on it at our next council meeting.
Second.
Moved by Abrams, seconded by Juniman. Any further discussion, council members?
Maybe this isn't the chief's job, but somewhere along the line, before we get the final plan in front of us, what will be the consequences if it's not met?
You know, I think that that's a good point that Mr. Beatty can weigh in on.
In the plan.
In the plan.
Yes, in the plan.
Well, Madam Mayor, council, you know, the plan will lay out the things that they have to do or are prohibited from doing. I think then, if there is another incident, the council will have to weigh that in terms of its compliance or not compliance with the plan, in terms of seriousness and so forth. And you will reach a decision based on that particular event.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. I hope that that was clear. I want you to know, too, that I hope that your business will succeed in our community. And I think that this operational action plan is a first step. I think it also reflects the seriousness by which the council takes this. And I'm looking forward to the next report at our council meeting in terms of what the progress has been and where we are, and when we could expect to see this, so that the full council can vote on it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams.
And with that, council members, I believe we have concluded our agenda.
We are done, are we?
And with that...